Good evening, colleagues. Before I formally open the meeting, would you please join me in the national applause to honour the life of Captain Tom Thorpe and the many thousands of others who've lost their lives as a result of the pandemic. To all the key workers, frontline staff who have worked for these benefits, if you'd like to unmute your microphones and join us one minute. Thank you. But now I ask you to mute your microphones. I would like to welcome everyone, councillors and anyone, members of the public, to this virtual meeting in February of Newcastle City's full council. So, welcome everyone and everyone watching online. Do we have any apologies?
I'm your old mayor. We've had an apology from councillor Beaton.
Any more? No? Okay, if we can move on to the minutes, does council agree the minutes of the meeting held on the 6th of January 2021?
Agreed.
Agreed.
I'm not hearing anything.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, that's agreed then. There are actually no official announcements this evening, so let's move on to correspondence. Item four, three items of correspondence were received after the publication of the agenda. They are in the items circulated for the meeting pack. Does council agree to receive those three items of correspondence?
Agreed.
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 Right, thank you colleagues, nobody said... Now, item five, one petition has been received this month, and this has more than two and a half thousand signatures, and will therefore be the subject of a time-limited debate. So, I'm calling on councillor Donnelly to present the petition regarding West Denton Pool. Councillor Donnelly, you've got five minutes, please.
Lord Mayor, this is a petition signed by 5,338 signatories to save the West Denton Swimming Pool. I present this submission and wording from Gavin Young, who initiated this on behalf of local residents. Many people rely on this pool to stay fit and healthy. Many have no transport to get to the pool in another area. Children rely on learning a valuable life skill with swimming. I pay for my son to learn how to swim. The other areas are fully booked, so he just has to go without this skill. We need the council to listen. More and more houses are being built, and more and more facilities are being removed. Stop the closure of the West Denton Pool. The council have an obligation to keep this open, one way or another. Residents of the outer west were pleased to hear the promising news yesterday of the consideration of building a new 2.3 million pool at West Denton Leisure Centre. It is also encouraging that the council has realised that the void which has been left, particularly in the outer west of the city, and the outcry from local residents needs addressing. The new facility is not proposed to open until 2023, leaving a gap in provision with alternatives out of reach of local residents. The city council transferred the outer west pool back in 2014, but it is obvious from the many comments received from the community that Greenwich Leisure has shown a lack of ability to run the facility effectively. As stated by councillor Wright, the writing was on the wall when Greenwich Leisure closed the training pool, and that Greenwich Leisure had then grasped the opportunity to shut the entire facility when the pandemic hit. The city council give a loan for four facilities to continue in the city. This sadly did not include the outer west pool. It is imperative that residents are kept up to date with the council's thinking at the earliest opportunity and are included in the decision-making process. The city council last month passed a motion to inform a working group of outer west councillors to be properly briefed on any work in progress relating to the outer west pool, so that we can relay this vital information back to residents. If the new facility is proposed to be built next to, rather than on the same site with the current pool, as an interim measure, can some swimming provision be provided for in the existing pool until the new facility is ready to open in 2023? Residents welcome this encouraging news, but it is important that they are involved at every stage of the process, consultation and decision-making. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Donnelly. I'll now call on councillor Ali to respond to the petition and propose a motion in response. Councillor Ali.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm absolutely delighted that as part of our review of leisure services, we have been able to set aside £1 million to consider building a new pool in West Denton, and we will work hard to source other funding. I propose council accepts the petition, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I now call on councillor Bell to second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I second petition and reserve the right to speak?
Councillor Ave.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very pleased to hear the announcement that the council is planning to reopen a new pool, new facilities in West Denton. But we have heard that it's expected that GLL will be operating the new facilities, and also we'll have at least a two-year gap before residents of the area will be able to use the pool. We have no confirmation that the new pool will be of the same standards that the previous West Denton Pool have had, and no confirmation on how the council had reached the conclusion that GLL will be the best operator for the pool. So, if all these concerns are addressed, we are delighted to see the new pool, but we don't want to see a local residence to miss out and lose the provision for at least two years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Ave. No one else has indicated, who has an entitlement to speak, has indicated they wish to. So, councillor Bell, you reserve the right to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll be very brief because I think it's unanimous that we accept the petition, and I think the council's already identified that we want to work with the residents in the area about the swim facilities, pool facilities that's available for the outer west. I think it's just right that we should mark through that GLL, part of a leisure industry that's been hit by the pandemic in such a way that it's actually devastated the whole industry right across the country, and I think we should bear that in mind. They have taken on under contract the pool and gym facilities within the city, and discussions are ongoing with them. So councillor Ave, when he mentioned about continuing work with them, that's under contract, and you would expect the city council to add together them contracts and discuss the legal aspects of that, which is ongoing as I see it. I think what we should note as well, because of the pandemic and the way that GLL and the council have worked, it's quite easy to fall into the trap of just thinking about this as just a facility. GLL as an organisation employ hundreds of indeed not thousands of people across the country, and also the volunteers that's involved with them. And I really think about the staff and those people who are losing opportunities through what wasn't the fault of GLL. This is a pandemic that's actually forced them down this lane, and they're in discussions now to try to preserve those jobs and keep those jobs, not just in Newcastle, but right across the city. And I think we've got to be part of that discussion as well. I'm delighted. I think there was one thing that, one or other thing that was said about the standard, and they'd expect the standard if this does come about. There's a case of, it shouldn't just be the existing standard, because we're talking about a pool that's some 60-year rule. I would expect a modern, up-to-date standard pool, one that is suitable and fit for purpose, and that's what we need to be looking at. So, we need to do the consultation at the appropriate stage, but that's after we're able to do a full survey of what's required, not just for the west of the city, but also for the rest of the city as well, and how it fits into the sports offer. So, I agree and second their motion to receive the petition. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell. Councillor Shorten, I've received an indication you wish to speak.
Thank you. It's just a commendation, first of all, for listening to the people and the needs of the outer west. The only thing that disturbs me, and I am truly pleased at this, following last month's council meeting, the only thing that worries me is that the words 'consideration' are in there. And I would like those words. I understand the funding issues and everything else, but I would ask the council to have a firm commitment towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ali, you know how they're right to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The Labour Party is committed to providing a solution to the challenges faced as a direct result of this pandemic, Lord Mayor, and we must not forget that this is a direct result of the pandemic and a result of the government's lack of support to the leisure industry, and this is why we're in the position with the West Denton Pool. We will no doubt consult with the public once our feasibility on the site has concluded and been carried out, and we will then discuss next steps with the public as well. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does council agree with councillor Ali's proposal?
Agreed.
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 Agreed. Okay, I'm not hearing anything, then, colleagues, so that's the way that that issue will be forwarded. Thank you councillor Ali, and in particular, I'd like to thank you tonight for spending so much time with us, actually on your birthday, and I know you're going to be very busy this evening. So, thank you, and a happy birthday. If we can move on to public questions, two requests to address council were received for this meeting. So firstly, can I invite Tay Pittman to ask a question? Tay, I think you're with us.
I am. Good evening, Lord Mayor and councillors. Rubbish litter and fly tipping have been longstanding issues in certain parts of the city, typically in the most densely populated areas. In the West End, the terraces in Arthur's Hill, Wingrove and Benwell seem to suffer adversely. The issues have existed for many years and have worsened since the introduction of communal bins. Lately, however, the situation has deteriorated. The introduction of communal bins, in theory, should have helped to alleviate some problems. However, their existence has prompted some tradespeople from other areas of the city to visit the back lanes and use the communal bins for free waste disposal. If the bins were already full, trade waste is dumped alongside the bins, and if not full, the heavy building waste compacts what's already in there. Normally, household rubbish is dropped in on top, and the bins become too heavy for the bin lorry to lift. While those bins are out of action, waiting to be emptied by a specialist vehicle, there's reduced capacity for local residents, which results in more rubbish being dumped on the street. Not all residents use their bins correctly. Some can't lift heavy objects into tall bins. Some have mobility issues and can't carry heavy bags down the road to alternative bins if the nearby ones are full. Some people bin dive, and while searching for useful or valuable items, they remove rubbish from the bins and don't return it. There are many causes of waste issues in the West End, and they can all be tackled, yet they aren't. These problems are happening every day, and local residents spend a lot of time reporting issues via environmental and contacting their local councillors. There are bags of rubbish strewn across the streets, mattresses, furniture, doors, tyres, bedding, white goods and building waste dumped in the back lanes. Numerous residents are seeing rats in the backyards and back lanes, and last month, an ambulance wasn't able to get down a Wingrove back lane due to rubbish and fly tipping blocking the road. This problem is affecting people's quality of life. For the most part, residents' requests for actions and meeting with officers, councillors and community have gone unanswered. Residents requested a meeting with councillors and officers in June. The meeting was arranged for October, but was unfortunately cancelled. There's been no offer of an alternative meeting. Now, two of the six local councillors have been doing a tremendous job to respond to concerns, but there are more than two local councillors who've been contacted about the issues. Local residents have even resorted to photographing and filming fly tippers and their vehicles, and in one case, this led to a vehicle being seized by Northumbria Police. Some residents have been threatened whilst taking proactive action. I was therefore shocked to read a report in The Evening Chronicle where a cabinet member criticised local residents for being too scared to grass up their neighbours. Victim blaming the people having to live with the problems won't improve the situation. It will only divide the community. Residents must be united to tackle these and other local issues. But rather than meeting with and supporting the local community in their efforts to address this, however, the council has decided to brief against them in the local press. The community deserves better than that from the local representatives. Now, the council's approach so far seems to be one of firefighting and responding to individuals as and when the problems arise, but the same problems are occurring across ward boundaries, and as such, a holistic approach is the only way to solve the problems. One councillor taking action in a handful of roads in one ward won't stop the problems occurring a few streets away in the next ward. Talking to a few individual concerns of residents won't allow you to find a solution that works for everyone in the wider area. Widespread consultation is needed to resolve the problems. Now, I appreciate that there are no easy answers to this situation, but at the moment, local residents aren't getting any answers. There's no single cause, and as such, all of the causes must be tackled. I'd like to ask the city council how they will plan to tackle the problems, and specifically, I'd like to know, for residents in Wingrove and Arthur's Hill, they've been waiting for months for a meeting between officers and councillors, when do you intend to be scheduled this for? Currently, the rubbish which is dumped alongside the bins doesn't get cleared away when those bins are empty. Whose responsibility is it to clear it up? And how will you deter fly tipping and bin diving? I understand that due to Covid, the council has the capacity to deploy officers to monitor the situation and to take enforcement action, but it's a short-term solution. What will happen when those staff return to their normal roles? Will you install and monitor more CCTV? Will you install bollards to prevent fly tippers from accessing the back lanes, which would also improve safety for pedestrians? And if you won't entertain these suggestions, how do you propose to resolve the problems? Would it be more cost-effective to replace the communal bins with individual household ones? According to publicly accessible data, the cost of dealing with litter and fly tipping is greater than what is reclaimed from penalties. When you consider the implications of Covid, such as more people working from home and generating more waste at home, the situation will get worse rather than improve, and increases to waste collection charges will undoubtedly compound the issues. We need actions, not words. The lack of a plan to tackle this issue is part of a pattern of inaction and broken promises with regard to the West End. For example, last January in 2020, I asked a question to council regarding residential speed limits being reduced to 20 miles an hour, and was told that one was planned for Fennam in Netherby Drive, but a year on, it hadn't gone ahead. How can the community trust the promises that council leadership make in response to the waste problems I've outlined?
Can I ask you two, please, Tay? Thank you.
I'm finished, thank you.
I'll call on councillor Stevenson to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Ms Pittman, for your question. There is greater capacity in the area to which you refer per household than in most areas of the city. I recently attended a meeting with senior officers and Arthur's Hill Ward councillors, councillor Kingsland and councillor Forbes, who clearly represented the concerns of residents. There has been a lot of positive action this year. We have increased shared bin capacity in the West End lanes. We have carried out significant work, changing lids, adding signage and communicating with residents. I thank the majority of residents who are using the right bins correctly. I thank responsible landlords, who, although they make a profit from our city, the responsible ones dispose of mattresses and other furniture correctly. I confirm that some residents are indeed too scared to grass up neighbours. It must be really frustrating for those residents who obey the rules. This is not victim blaming. It is about understanding and empathising. The social context is complex, and I advise residents to contact the police if they feel intimidated. You have made other claims against this council which are profoundly unfair and profoundly wrong. Actually, we have dedicated back lane resource whose job it is to continuously remove fly tipping and side waste from the areas to which you refer. Nearly 30% of the city's refuse enforcement cameras are located in Nearly 30% of the city's refuse enforcement cameras are located in this area. CCTV cannot cover all of the streets and bins. And again, I thank all those residents who have provided us with the information which can lead to prosecution. We are committed to community engagement, and officers have met many times with residents and compiled detailed responses to emails. The leader will be chairing a meeting next month. It is indeed time for actions, not words. This is why the teams have been concentrating on delivering services without disruption during the pandemic for the benefit of all of our residents and in a way that is safe for our staff. We all need to look after our environment. Pretending it is solely the council's responsibility for political purposes is not going to help. Others need to fall into line. People don't pay taxes to babysit those who don't want to play by the rules. It is simply not fair on the many residents who do. The message, without any ambiguity, is stop making the place a tip. Play by the rules or face the consequences. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Stevenson. Tay, you have up to one minute to respond, please.
Thank you very much, councillor Stevenson. It's great to hear that councillor Forbes will be chairing a meeting next month. And I'm aware that a lot of action has been happening recently, but these problems have been going on for many years. My children go to school in the local area. I walk through the area on a daily basis. I see that the issues are getting worse and worse. So other options are needed because you cannot keep up this level of firefighting. A whole new approach is needed. This doesn't fit with a waste strategy. We need more. Thank you.
Thank you, Tay. If we can now move on, please, I'll invite Mark Pearson to ask a question. Mark, I believe you're with us.
Hi. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, brilliant. Thank you. Good evening, and thanks for letting me ask this question tonight. So the budget, the council's budget for 2021-2023 deals a cut of £400,000 to the subsidy provided by the council to schools for free school meals. Surely, however, however it is dressed up, any cut to free school meals in the current context is something that the council would avoid, especially as the North East has the highest uptake of free school meals in the country. Councilors also need to take into account the amount of real-term funding that has been cut from schools over the years. In 2020, 59 out of 86 schools in Newcastle were in a funding crisis. There was a shortfall of £9.6 million, a loss of £239 per pupil. If the council takes a stand and does not cut the free school meal subsidy, then schools can use more of its budget on other areas. The budget claims the cut will not impact children or eligibility for free school meals. However, no information has been given on what the cut actually means in practice. There needs to be complete transparency on this issue. The subsidy has obviously been needed up until now. I find it difficult to understand how suddenly it is no longer needed, and that nearly half a million pounds cut will have no negative impact anywhere along the line for free school meals or in Newcastle schools generally. So my questions, where exactly in the provision of free school meals will the money be cut from? How will eligibility for and quality and quantity of free school meals be protected? Will schools have to cover the shortfall? If so, how will schools cover the shortfall? Has funding been found elsewhere? If so, when will it be paid? How much is it and how long will it last? What is the total amount the council pays towards free school meals currently, and where does this money come from? How many schools have you discussed this with in Newcastle? Have schools received increased ring fence funding specifically for free school meals? If so, how much does this amount to and how long will it last? What percentage of funding that schools receive covers the cost of free school meals in Newcastle? It's not good enough that every year we hear that responsibility for the cuts does not lie with Newcastle Labour Council but with the Conservative government. Of course, we know the government are intent on slashing funding and services for working-class communities. However, they would not have been able to administer this if it was not for the complete lack of opposition from Labour councils up and down the country. The Tories haven't had a single councillor in Newcastle since 1996. On the 3rd of March 2010, a budget which made cuts of £10.3 million to services was voted on. I mean, at the time, Newcastle was a Lib Dem-run council, and 24 Labour councillors abstained on that vote. Surely Newcastle Labour councillors could make a stand to defend the interests of our poorest children in cash-strapped schools by not voting in favour of a budget which includes a cut to free school meals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I call on, again, councillor Stevenson to respond.
Thank you again, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Mr Pearson, for the opportunity to explain the budget proposal, which will have no consequence on the provision of free school meals. This proposal will not have any effect upon eligibility. If this administration believed that any child would be negatively affected, this proposal would simply not be on the table. The backstage economics are more complex, so allow me to have a quick trot through the detail. Newcastle's school catering service provides meals in 76 schools across the city. The school food plan sets out the national policy and standards which we adhere to. The school food standards are intended to help children develop healthy eating habits and ensure that they get the energy and nutrition they need across the whole school day. 75% of our meals are prepared from scratch in our own-school kitchens. We are using environmentally sustainable and ethical food produce, either meeting or exceeding UK animal welfare standards, making healthy eating easy, and wherever possible, using seasonal produce from local suppliers. Schools receive funding directly from government to fund free school meals based on 100% of their eligible pupils. The council charges schools a fixed price per meal for the number of meals taken each day by eligible pupils. The actual take-up levels of free school meals is significantly lower than the numbers of eligible pupils that the funding is based on. The proposed increase is needed to recover the full cost of providing free school meals for eligible pupils. It will have no impact on schools' budgets or on families. The price per meal has been fixed since 2015 with no inflationary uplifts. There has been a full consultation with schools on the proposed increase, and we have received no objections. All schools have been invited to briefings. All schools have received the full information. Thank you again for the opportunity to correct some of the inaccuracies being disseminated about this and to clearly state yet again that this backstage economics will categorically not impact upon children and their families. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Stevenson. Mark, again, you've got up to one minute to respond.
Brilliant. Thanks for that. Yeah, still, I mean, I can understand backstage economics, but I still feel that there isn't transparency here because it's nearly half a million pounds of cuts, and we still don't know how this is exactly going to affect schools. Surely, it's going to have some impact somewhere along the line. And you know what? To me, £345 million of cuts since 2010, we have had Labour councillors that have voted against the cuts. In 2013, there were Hull councillors, Southampton councillors that voted against the cuts. I think they had to leave the Labour Party as a result of that. I just want to know what will it take before councillors put up any real resistance to these cuts? Now, even with Corbyn as leader of the Labour Party, he wrote letters to councils instructing them that they have to set so-called legal budgets. In other words, they weren't allowed to vote against the cuts. It was then written into the Labour Party manifesto a year later to say that if you're a Labour councillor and you vote against cuts or abstain on them, you could face disciplinary measures.
Please, Mark.
Say again, sorry?
Can you wind up, please?
Yep, yep. So I think, yeah, but what of it? You know, you could be punished. But what of it? Working-class communities are being punished enough as it is, and I think it's about time Labour councillors stood up to vote and fight these cuts. It just seems to me that you can't actually, in deeds and not just words, be a member of the Labour Party as a politician and also be against austerity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. If we can now move on to item seven, which is on the independent remuneration panel recommendations. First of all, may I ask colleagues, does council agree that Mr Eric Richards, the Chair of the Independent Remuneration Panel, can speak, understanding Order 29 to present the report which sets out their recommendations?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. So I now invite Mr Richards to introduce the report. Eric.
Good evening, Lord Mayor, councillors. I trust you can hear me.
Yes.
Well, thank you for the opportunity of presenting this report, which was not exactly riveting reading. I've come to regard these meetings as one of my annual retreats and have to sing for my supper before you. I hope the report is reasonably sophisticated and really needs no major comment from me, but I would simply like to make a few points only. The panel were very aware of budgetary problems facing the council, a financial position which has been compounded by the effects of the pandemic. And in the circumstances, it would have been very easy for us to have said, that's it, no increase, or even take some money off, whatever, we could have done that quite easily. But the IRP is not bound to submit a report based solely upon external factors. Rather, we've had regard to the work of you, the councillors, and how you manage your roles in the running of the authority, and to recommend what we consider an appropriate allowance, bearing in mind we are, of course, independent of the council. And we have to recognise that the ultimate decision on allowances is a matter entirely for you as members. Now, Newcastle is not one of the largest authorities in the country, but it is one of the most influential authorities in England, and you are ultimately responsible for an organisation with a multi-million pound budget and thousands of employees. And don't forget the old adage, one which was drummed to me in my 20-odd years as a deputy chief officer and a chief officer. Officers propose, members dispose. In other words, the decisions, the ultimate decisions, rest with you as councillors. We were aware and have been for some years that there are views that all councillors are grossly overpaid, and all you do, you all volunteer to come here and just sit in meetings and that's it. If that was so, I think our task would have been very, very easy. But we know that there's far more to your roles, particularly in managing an authority in an era of austerity, when unpopular decisions have to be made and decisions which impact greatly upon your constituents. Now, the panel accepted council life does impact heavily on your private lives. And having regard to the time and effort councillors put in, and in previous years, of course, we have interviewed a number of councillors, we've had evidence put forward as to what being a councillor entails. The remuneration is not great. Indeed, the allowances you get did not really equate to the minimum wage. And of course, what is often forgotten by those outside, what you get is taxable. So in our recent deliberations, we felt that you have a justifiable system of remuneration, and as another old adage would say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But in considering allowances, we have regard to the fact that two years ago, we recommended the first increase in allowances for a number of years. And this year, we have recommended a further small increase, taking into account a number of factors, including the CPI. But then we rounded up the figure fractionally, which makes, we thought, more easily read. Perhaps we could even have recommended a higher figure, but we accepted that this was not appropriate in the current circumstances. Now, the recommended increases still compare very favourably with your neighbouring authorities and indeed authorities in the country. You are not a greedy council as far as your remuneration is concerned. Indeed, if you look through the report, the reference revenue is written to low, lower and lowest appear. I wouldn't, however, make one particular reference. Paragraph 5.5 of the report refers to the City Futures Board. Whilst it has absorbed a health and wealth being function, we feel that its role for the city arising from the current health and financial position may well become increasingly important over the years, and hence, we do recommend that SRA is be paid to Chair and Vice Chair. Lord Mayor, as I say in parliament, I commend this report to the chamber. And can I say one final point, however? The panel were very much grateful for the assistance offered by Linda Scott and John Howard in their help in working out the, that is up and the take is away, if you like, and information on what you as a council and councillors do. So having said that, Lord Mayor, the report is now up to you and the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Richards. I'll now call on councillor Robinson to move that covering report, which will be, I understand, seconded by councillor Durant.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I formally move the covering report. Thank you.
Councillor Durant?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to formally second and extend my thanks to Mr Richards and the panel for their work on this. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll now call on councillor McCarthy to move an amendment, which I understand is to be seconded by councillor Penny Evans. Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Can I add thanks to Eric and the other members of the Independent Remuneration Panel for their very thoughtful work in pulling together this report? The independence of the panel is really, really important to us all so they can consider the issues without political interference. I think what Eric has talked about tonight is the huge variation in councillor allowances, not just in the region, but actually, the report demonstrates that variance across the whole country, and I do really think it needs to be properly addressed nationally and removed from local decision-making. Lord Mayor, on the issue of councillor allowances, we, in this Labour administration, do not feel that this is the right time to accept an increase, even the relatively small one, such as that being proposed for us tonight. So I'm proposing an amendment to the report which rejects that part of the proposals. At this time, Lord Mayor, when many of our residents are really suffering and struggling financially, it's not the right time for us to agree an increase. Lord Mayor, as a consequence of this amendment, councillors will see their allowances frozen for the next year. The Labour administration, the council, though, do want to accept the proposed increase in the carers allowances that enable us to undertake our work with the right support for our families whenever we need that. Keeping that at the level of the real living wage is the right proposal. It is fair and acknowledges the importance of that support at the times when we need it. Lord Mayor, we also accept the principle that Eric has outlined of those in a position of Chair or Vice Chair of the council committee. We have introduced the City Futures Board and the whole process that backs that up. So we accept that SRA, that appropriate remuneration for the positions of Chair and Vice Chair of a significant partnership body ought is appropriate, and we accept that as part of the role. Of course, Lord Mayor, we know that for this council, that has no impact because our policy doesn't allow more than one allowance, one special responsibility allowance for any individual, so will not cost the council anything, but it determines the same principle for the City Futures Board as exists for all council committees. Lord Mayor, I'm very happy to move the amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Penny Evans?
Formally second the amendment, Lord Mayor.
There are a number of speakers who've indicated they'd like to contribute, so start with councillor Cot.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and thank you very much, Mr Richards, for your work on this report. We do appreciate the work that you undertake, and it makes very good reading. I will say that as an opposition, we will support the amendment as set out by councillor McCarthy to freeze the allowances, but we also recognise the importance of carers. to freeze the allowances, but we also recognise the importance of carers and to recognise caring issues and also around the provision for Chair and Vice Chair of the City Futures Board. It's quite clear the eyes of the public are upon us, certainly locally, to see how we deal with these issues. This is an incredibly difficult time, as councillor McCarthy was saying. We have people in real need and distress out there at this time. And this would certainly be the wrong time for us to increase our council allowances. That's not to underestimate and undervalue the contributions of elected members, but there are many people up and down the country who are making lots of contributions to how we address the pandemic, and we have to look and be aware of those issues. So we will certainly support the amendment. I would like to make a recommendation, and in the report, this is perhaps thinking further afield, perhaps to next year's report. In the report, there's a lot of discussion around the new virtual working, the online working we're doing and the impact of that. I would think it would be a very useful exercise to undertake some kind of evaluation of the impact of that work moving forward. Obviously, we don't know how much of that will be sustained in the longer term, but all the noises are that some of that will continue because people have learnt new ways of working. But who knows what the future has to hold? But I think possibly by next year, it may be a little clearer as to what elements of that will be sustained and what impact that may have. At the moment, we have a report that alludes to it, but at the moment, there isn't a lot of evidence behind that. I think we need to run this a bit further, but next year, it might be useful to bring that into the equation. So with those comments, I will finish, and thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Donnelly.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to the panel. The council has revealed it has to save £40 million over the next two years. This involves remodelling services and raising fees and charges. This at the same time when council taxes due to increase by 5%, 50, sorry, 5%, sorry, Lord Mayor, with 15 fewer posts. The leader of council stated, "We face difficult choices and we need to decide how best to cut our cloth in these trying times." Bearing in mind what the leader of council has said, "How can we look our residents in the face if we decide to award ourselves a pair of eyes?" Whilst many are difficult, are in difficult circumstances in these unprecedented times. In light of the amendment, Lord Mayor, I certainly support placing a freeze on councillors' allowances. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else has indicated they wish to speak. So if I can go back to the move of the report, oh, sorry, is that councillor Shorten got your hand up? Councillor Shorten.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. And can I first of all say thanks to the hardworking Independent Remuneration Panel. I think in some senses, they recognise perhaps what the role of a councillor truly is and how much commitment and effort and time throughout the day and the intrusions that are placed upon them. I don't think the public has the correct perception of councillors, what they do and how much time they spend, and in fact also how much they're remunerated. Now, last year, I said I welcomed the effort, but was actually going to, I voted against the £200. This year, to be clear, the amount of the increase proposed, while I sympathise with it, it amounts to £1.44 per week for a basic taxpayer. And in fact, for my higher rate paying colleague, it's £1.15. Now, just to begin to be clear, it's well below the minimum wage. I myself am below the quote poverty threshold. And quite simply, my position as an independent councillor is not geared in any way to the remunerations I receive, nor the accolades, nor the rewards. But in fact, the principle of serving, and to that I'm honoured. Now, last year, Labour accused me or challenged me to give it to charity, the increase. I've got to say, that's what we've done. This year, I would have opposed the increase, but I must congratulate the council in these circumstances on recognising and doing the right thing and leading from the front. So well done, and I support councillor McCarthy's amendment. Thank you.
Okay, the mover of the report, councillor Robinson, now has the right to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry, my microphones. I would also like to thank the Independent Remuneration Panel for all the hard work they have put into this report. And rather than go on, I will just say, I will move and accept the amendment, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Robinson has accepted the amendment. Though, is the amendment agreed?
Agreed. 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 Agreed.
Thank you. As the amendment was accepted, we've no need to deliberate further. That is the course of action. The amendment is approved. So if we can move on to item eight, which is the adult social care local account. I'll call on councillor Kilgower to introduce the report. Councillor Kilgower, I understand you've been having some connection problems.
Yes, Lord Mayor, sorry, my apologies. I'll hopefully get through this without any too many problems. But I'll rejoin as quickly as I can if I do. Thank you, Lord Mayor, for introducing this. I'm pleased to present the Adult Social Care Local Account for 2019-20 to council tonight. Thank you to Health Scrutiny Committee, who have received the report, and to Health Watch Newcastle for their helpful and considered comments. I'm pleased to note their comments highlighting improvements and successes, as well as their suggestions for further work, and I will ensure that they're followed up. As members know, the local account describes what adult social care services are and what they do. Adult social care in simple terms helps people to live as independently as possible for as long as possible, to prevent or delay the need for services in the first place. We assess need when that need arises, organises and helps plan a person's support, arranges service delivery, supports carers and safeguards vulnerable adults. And you'll see from the report that the numbers of people receiving long-term support remain fairly steady, with some categories, such as people with physical disabilities or older people, seeing a slighting decrease. Numbers of younger adults, those aged 18 to 64, and people with learning disabilities who receive support, however, have increased. And I think what we're seeing here is slightly fewer people receiving long-term support, but with greater complexity of need and consequently more expensive care packages generally. The numbers of people receiving short-term re-ablement support increased during 2019 to 20 to just under 2,114, with 70% needing no further care or supported lower level at the end of their re-ablement support, which is fantastic. We received 7,556 safeguarding concerns, which resulted in 4,643 safeguarding adult inquiries. 2,095 carers received information, advice and/or support, with 315 routine referrals being made to Newcastle carers. I'm delighted that our dementia-friendly city work has been highlighted in the report. It's an initiative I'm particularly proud of and is, I think, an example of a small budget, a very small budget, combined with a lot of enthusiasm, imagination and partnership work and coming together to achieve really great things. As I've said in this, well, I'm saying in this chamber, in this environment before, Lord Mayor, adult social care may not be the most visible of services to the majority of our residents, but they are amongst our most important responsibilities. And it's reassuring to know that when people do need our help and support, the council and our partners are still able to provide good quality, short and long-term support for our residents. I think the report's very clear, Lord Mayor, but I'm happy to take questions if there are any.
Thank you, councillor Kilgower. A number of members have asked to contribute, but may I ask if you keep your contributions and questions concise, please? Councillor Avery will start with. Councillor Avery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Kilgower, I was just wondering if you could talk a bit more about the numbers and the experiences of people who are users of adult social care in the city, who have learning disabilities and other disabilities, such as autism, and particularly the measures we have taken and the extent that staff have gone to to look after those people in what obviously extremely trying times because of COVID. And also, if you could say a little bit about how that ties into protecting vulnerable adults again through the COVID period. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Do you want to answer these points as they're raised, councillor Kilgower, or will you take them all?
I'll take them all at once, as is customary. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, though. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Could I first, on behalf of the opposition, just put on record our thanks to all the staff in social care who've done such a wonderful job over the last year and looking after all our residents? And I do think this is a well-presented report. The officers have taken on board a number of concerns that were raised by health scrutiny in previous years. My questions refer to the comments by Health Watch. Hopefully, we'll have a discussion about carers later, but they did express concern that fewer carers have been receiving support or information and advice, and that this has been reducing over the past four years. And they've asked for some information about why the number is reducing and what impact that's having on carers, and I think that's an important question. They've also suggested some other issues that they would like to know to give a better insight into the lives of adult social care users, such as how clean and comfortable they consider their home to be, how easy it is for them to get to all the places they want to visit in their local area. Have they got enough social contact? And is their home meeting all their needs? And I do think those are useful questions. I do hope that we'll be able to take those on board in future.
Councillor Throe.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I was actually going to ask a similar question about the point on unpaid carers. So I'll allow councillor Kilgower to answer it, but I would like to say that how difficult it is to talk to some unpaid carers who do approach as elected representatives and hear about how they're struggling. It's a labour of love. And you know, when you're speaking to an unpaid carer, that there is a vulnerable adult on the other side or a vulnerable child who needs help. It's quite shameful that the government doesn't value this and that carers' allowance is less than £70 a week for 35 hours' work. And it's estimated that unpaid carers deliver a service that would cost £132 billion in the UK. So I would just like that go down the same line on that point.
Well, no one else has indicated they want to contribute at this stage. Go, councillor Shorten again.
Good game, Lord Mayor. And I must commend the report and the work done by the Adult Social Care and Children's Services. In my regard, it's outstanding. But at the same time, I would like reassurance that the amount that we gave is ring-fenced, as the leader of the council proposed last year at 65%, obviously over an increasing budget. But what did concern me is if there are better ways of spending that money within social care. In other words, in the delivery. I say that because at the last budget, councillor Forbes-
IT Support Team speaking.
He took a real example of £750,000 to support one child and one mother. Now, I don't know what you get for that money and if that money might be better spent by the services to deliver more and better care for others. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
No one else has indicated they wish to contribute?
Lord Mayor, councillor Cot has had his hand up.
My hands up, Lord Mayor, as well.
Oh, I see. Was that from previous?
Councillor Cot. Yes?
No.
I think it must have been from the previous speaker.
I can't actually see the hands up anyway on my screen this evening for some reason, so please bear with me. Anyone else quickly?
I've got a question, Lord Mayor. Councillor Richards, I'm here.
Is in, yes.
Thank you very much, councillor Kilgower, for that report. A lot of very heartening, very difficult times, I think. I'd like to ask a question about the success measures. So on page 44, I think it is, there's a statistic which looks very good. 91.4% of desired outcomes were achieved in safeguarding of adults. So could you tell us a bit more about that and put that into some context so we can see how it compares with our work in previous years and with other authorities? Thank you.
And finally, councillor Ave.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, councillor Kilgower, for the excellent report. You have reported that you've had over 9,000 requests from people who have previously had no contact with adult social services. And you have given us a brief overview of what these contacts resulted in. We all hope that this awful pandemic ends soon, but unfortunately, we will be living with the aftermath of the pandemic for some time to come. Do you feel that you have the capacity and the resources to deal with any new contacts in near and intermediate future? Thank you.
Okay, councillor Kilgower, would you like to respond to those, please?
I'll try. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Shorten, I'm not entirely sure which 65% you're referring to as being ring-fenced. The social care precept is ring-fenced to adult social care.
Right.
I'm not entirely sure what you're referring to there. Children's social care is my colleague, Paula Holland's responsibility rather than mine. I do find it quite, I'm choosing my words carefully. I find it quite astonishing that you're suggesting that we should cease supporting a child or children who have very complex and severe need in order to spread that money more thinly elsewhere in the system. And clearly, we have statutory responsibilities, be they towards children or adults. And we have a duty to meet that person, that individual's statutory need. Regardless of the cost, we have to make sure that that person has what they need to live with as much quality of life as we can possibly hope that they can and to support their family and parents in some cases. Alongside that, so I'm I'm struggling a little bit with that question, sorry. Councillor Avery asked about people with learning disabilities and autism particularly and their experiences during the pandemic, I think. As you can see from the figures in the report, the numbers of people with learning disabilities and autism have increased, the people we're supporting have increased. And what we're finding is that the complexity of need of those people is also increasing. We've worked with our providers throughout the pandemic to maintain standards and standards of very good quality provision. And we're using infection prevention control funding to create a small private team to further help and support providers throughout this pandemic. And I think the success of some of these measures is demonstrated by the very low numbers of people with learning disabilities and autism in our supported accommodation who have tested positive for COVID. We're very conscious of how difficult the pandemic can be for somebody, particularly if that person needs structure and routine in their life. And we're working very closely with our providers to try and minimise disruption to people, particularly where we may have had to close daycare facilities, for example, in order to respond adequately to COVID. So I would like to reassure councillor Avery and council that we're doing as much as we can. And obviously, in the longer term, we will be providing, we are building more very specialised accommodation to meet people's very specific needs. And clearly, that then prevents people having to go quite often into- quite often into a very inappropriate residential care setting or something similar. I hope that helps answer that question. Councillor Taylor asked about carers, I'll come to this in a moment. Councillor Taylor's comments about the survey and the the inclusion of data from the survey, I think the problem, I understand the point and I take the point that Health Watch have made absolutely. I think the problem there is we're conflating two different things, the local account, which is about the services we provide, and the people who receive our services, experiences which actually are wider than the services we provide. So some of those questions we're asking are absolutely valid and relevant and important to somebody's quality for life, but they're not necessarily the services that the council provides for that person, those perceptions, those answers to those questions are impacted by a number of other things. And I think we'd need to kind of dig into that a bit to understand some of the survey results. But I do absolutely take the point that they're important and can help us shape some of the services that we do provide. The question about about unpaid carers, and thank you councillor Thro, I absolutely agree with you, both about the allowance being a pitance and also really the way you expressed the experiences of carers and how how difficult it is and how undervalued they are generally, I think. We know there are many hidden carers in the city and we're doing what we can to reach them. We have a dedicated carers lead officer who works very closely with Newcastle carers and others. As the report says, the community health team and social care direct team do make referrals into commissioned carer support. And this has now been extended actually to include carers identified as needing additional support by our daycare and other service providers and by our welfare rights officers, following very productive discussions between those teams. We've also got a carers action plan. It's currently in its first draft. And it has as one of its aims, increasing recognition of and support to carers at various stages in their caring role, be they children who are caring for a parent right through to end of life care, which I hope will also also help. Councillor Chisholm asked about safeguarding, the safeguarding adults desired outcomes figure. It's a good question. It's one I asked of officers too, actually. Only what I also asked was about why, why it is a good figure, but why is it only 91.4%? It is, I'd like to reassure him, it is a good rate. We compare very favourably with similar local authorities. When I've asked to dig down a little bit further, sometimes the reason the outcome desired by the person being safeguarded isn't achieved is because of the actions we have to take to stop the abuse happening. So, for example, if someone is being financially abused, then the way we stop that might be to take over that person's finances for a while. So they may be happy that the abuse has stopped, but not necessarily with the method we've had to employ. And I think in some cases, the person being safeguarded wants the abuse to stop, but not necessarily the relationship with the person abusing them, which might end up being the end result. So I hope I helped explain that figure slightly. Councillor Avi asked about capacity and resources, and thank you for that question. Yes, we do. I think I think I think this council has made a commitment that we will honour people's need. I think the when we go on to my annual report, you'll see that we've incurred additional expense because of the pandemic. But that was expense that we thought was necessary. We needed to spend some of that money early on in the in the pandemic. We had to spend that money to ensure that there was a flow of PPE throughout the system. We supported our providers and partners where they were unable to access PPE. We stepped in, bought it when we had procurement routes that they weren't, they didn't have access to. So I think I think that demonstrates that we are determined to ensure that people will receive the services they need throughout this pandemic. And clearly, where we have a statutory duty, we will always meet that. If I can, I think that's all of the questions answered. If I can sum up, Lord Mayor. Despite a sustained attack on local government finance by central government and cuts in cost pressures of over £54 million to our adult social care budgets, and we had something of like 89% of respondents told us they were satisfied, very satisfied with the care they received. 92% of people told us that the services they received made them feel safe and secure, and that increases year on year. We still, despite those millions of pounds cut from adult social care budgets, supported over 5,000 people with long term care. Almost 2,000 people received short term care through our fantastic rehabilitation service. These are figures we should be so proud of. And I am proud, very proud that despite decreasing budgets and increasing demand, our services, our staff are keeping people safe, supported and able to live with dignity as they so deserve. And I recommend the report to councillor, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kilgare. Does councillor agree to receive the report?
Agree.
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 Thank you, colleagues.
Agreed.
Agreed.
We can move on. There has been one oral question received this month. And I'll invite councillor Stone to read that question to councillor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. What reasons does the cabinet member attribute to the increasingly high prevalence of failed or faulty traffic and pedestrian crossing signals in the city? And what steps are being taken to address this?
Thank you. Call on councillor Ainsley to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This question, councillor Stone, is it seems to be more about an operational issue rather than a policy matter. But also, it implies that there's evidence of there being an increase in the number of faults. And the facts show that this simply is not the case. In fact, there were fewer examples of faults on traffic signals in Newcastle in 2020 than there were in 2019. And we know this because Newcastle City Council operates the Regional Traffic Signals Group. This is a regional service covering the Tynan Way authorities as well as maintaining mutual assistance agreements with Durham and Northumberland county councils for over 30 years. The Traffic Signals Group maintains almost 1,000 signal installations across Tynan Way, of which 344 are in Newcastle. The group provides a 24 hour a day, 365 day per year response to reported traffic signal faults. Most are attended to within four hours. There were 1,368 faults reported in 2020, which is 20, which is 79 fewer than the 1,447 that were reported in 2019. The number of faults can increase in periods of inclement weather and the heavy rain and strong winds of the last few weeks may have had an impact. However, looking back more than a few weeks, you were looking prior to that. The number of faults is consistent and certainly doesn't show the increase that councillor Stone is implying. The Traffic Signals Group will continue to monitor and address any issues which may arise with traffic signals. And as always, any faults can be reported through and via a call or the customer care team. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Stone, wish to come back on that?
Yes, I think I'm going to have to, councillor, Lord Mayor. I am interested in that response from councillor Ainsley. I did ask this to her as an operational question to her and to the head of transport some months ago and got no response at all. So I'm grateful she's actually deign to answer it on this occasion. She clearly has some information about the number of reports. I hope she will look at how many numbers of incidents I've reported in the last few months. Certainly, in my part of the city, in High Heaton and Heaton and the north east of the city, there is a majority of the signals have had problems and I've had to report into double figures, probably getting over 20 in the last few months alone. So if the problem is confined to my area and not the rest of the city, then then that's, I suppose that's good news for the rest of the city. But I'm not really reassured by that response in terms of my part of the city. And it does cause some issues for road safety and road traffic safety. And my supplementary question therefore is whether the council has made any assessment to its potential legal liability in the event of road traffic accidents where failed or faulty signals have been found to be a contributing factor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Stone. I certainly ask officers, I apologize for not responding to your email. I don't recall receiving that and I shall certainly follow follow that up and give you a written response. I'll also check out, and of course, we take our legal liability very, very seriously. And I shall also follow that up with a written response once I've checked the detail with with officers, because as I have said, it is an operational question rather than anything, any policy area. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Young, you've also indicated you wish to ask a question supplementally.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to ask whether there are plans to improve traffic light signals across the city. And if so, could you explain the environmental implications of any improvements made? Thank you.
Councillor Ainsley.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thanks councillor Young. We are focused on upgrading many of the the traffic signals across the city. And we're taking, we're leading the delivery of the Regional Transforming Cities project, which will include the renewal of about 49 sites within Newcastle. To, you know, we're changing them to extra low voltage and light emitting diode signals, which will obviously reduce emissions and, you know, CO2 emissions. And we're also looking at adding these to the to more corridors that are leading into the city as well. All new junctions or installations include this technology. So, you know, that work has already started, which has improved the reliability and give longer lifespan, which, as I've said, you know, reduces energy and CO2 emissions much more than the traditional halogen lamps. These sites will be connected to the Urban Traffic Management and Control Centre, who will provide live feedback of faults, which might help address councillor Stone's issues as well. And we've also, you know, thinking about environmental issues, we've also changed the timings of the lights in the city centre to double the amount of time for pedestrians to cross the road. So this, of course, will complement the work we're already doing to increase space for pedestrians and cyclists and to encourage more people to choose active forms of travel rather than relying on their car. So that will all, you know, help help towards the environment. Thank you, councillor Young. Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ainsley. Two written questions were received this month and the replies are included in the items circulated for meeting pack. So if we can move on to item 10, which is cabinet member updates, the first one is health and social care. And again, I call on councillor Kilgare to introduce the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I am, as always, extremely proud to present the Health and Social Care Annual Report to councillor tonight. Thanks are due to the officers who helped write the report and to Health Scrutiny Committee for their questions, comments and interest. While some of our champions work has been put on hold during the pandemic, councillor Felicity Mandelson has continued to promote good mental health in her role as our mental health champion, for which I thank her. Lord Mayor, I hope the annual report helps members to understand the context in which adult social care operates, a context of increasing demand, increasing complexity of need, increasing reliance on one off temporary funding from government, and sadly, decreasing budgets due to government cuts and unfunded cost pressures. This year's report must also be seen in the context of COVID-19, the defining feature of 2020, which brought significant challenges, shaped services and created additional cost pressures. The annual report cannot cover every service delivered, particularly in a portfolio as diverse as this one. But I hope it's helped explain how services rose to the challenge of COVID-19, be that sourcing PPE and supporting the city's care homes through to redesigning services to allow them to be provided in a COVID secure way. Our transport service being redeployed to meet immediate challenges of PPE collection and storage right through to collaborative Newcastle, working in new ways across the health and care sector. We've delivered on our manifesto commitments, delivered new housing schemes for people with social care needs and supported the work of City Lifeline. And I'd like to place on record my sincere thanks and appreciation for our staff who've met these unprecedented challenges head on and whose resilience, hard work and dedication has been a shining light in these dark times. By continuing to deliver services, often in different ways, they've helped to improve the lives of so many of our residents. Lord Mayor, I warned in previous years that adult social care nationally was at tipping point. In Newcastle, we saw the cumulative impact of the increased demand, complexity of need and unfunded cost pressures that I've just mentioned, combined with the impact of 10 long years of government austerity, resulting in a budget overspend for the first time. This was primarily driven by continued demand for our older people's services and supporting people who have increasingly complex needs. Despite this, I'm confident the transformation of services and proposed savings set out in our three year budget are ones which will allow the council to deliver vital services for those in need. We've seen what we're capable of achieving in previous years. Despite the cuts we have so far faced, which should never be underestimated, we've continued to deliver high quality care. This report was written in November to meet scrutiny deadlines and since then, we've seen the rollout of the vaccine in Newcastle. With all our care home residents offered the vaccine, indeed, we were one of the first in the country to achieve this, which is a real cause for celebration. We have received national recognition for our collaborative Newcastle vaccination programme with more than 500,000 people vaccinated in our region as of yesterday. Adult social care staff have been vital to the success of the rollout. And again, I'd like to thank them for all they and our collaborative Newcastle partners have done and are doing. Lord Mayor, there's an awful lot of information in the report, but I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, we've got roughly 20 minutes to discuss this. Try and get to as many people as have indicated, but again, a reminder, if you keep your contributions concise, we'll get through more. So if I can start with councillor Avery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My question is about the redeployment of staff during the COVID period. And what I want to know is, and first I should say that obviously, I want to pay tribute to all of our staff who have agreed to redeploy and take on new responsibilities or different responsibilities, who have played a huge part in making our COVID response possible. But my question is about what lessons you think the council has learned from that institutionally, about flexibility in moving staff and responsiveness and agility, as well as whether you think individual staff, for example, managers who might have been temporarily redeployed to the frontline, what lessons they might have learned. So that's both on an institutional and an individual level. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cot.
Okay, thanks, Lord Mayor. And a couple of questions for me. Firstly, just to, oh, it's all frozen. I'll carry on. Hopefully, it's okay. Is it frozen?
Just your picture.
Okay, right, okay. Just a couple of questions for me. The first one, councillor Kilgare, you mentioned about the growing complexity of need and the cost pressures that's involved. I recently had an opportunity to speak to the director and one of the issues was around abuse of vulnerable adults. And there is some learning to be done, I believe, from recent criminal cases related to things like Operation Sanctuary and other things. I'm just wondering whether you can say anything about how that's actually contributing to configuration of services for obviously a very vulnerable community there. The other element, and of course, I will also welcome and thank all staff who have been involved with the vaccination of of people and particularly in our care homes. But I was absolutely astonished a few weeks ago by the publicity that went out, which suggested that all people in care homes had been vaccinated. How on earth could that happen when that was certainly not the case? And I believe the director was quite angry about it. But obviously, that's an issue for the council. And I hope as the lead member in this area, that you've taken that up and made sure that that sort of thing will not happen again. Because it's really important that we that we are able to ensure the confidence of people out there in what the council is trying to do and what partners are trying to do and delivering care during this pandemic crisis.
Councillor Higgins.
Am I muting? Am I not muted? I think I'm unmuted now, Lord Mayor, aren't I? Yes, I mean, thanks to councillor Kilgare for, you know, this report, this comprehensive report and the earlier report that she presented as well. And also, you know, just to endorse the comments about, thanks to all the thanks to all the staff who constantly deliver a good service and get such positive feedback from people in the city about the service that they're producing at such a difficult time. To a certain extent councillor Kilgower has addressed the point that, the question that I was going to make, but I will just perhaps just comment on the fact that, of course, the Prime Minister in the last, prior to the last general election did make a bold promise that he was going to sort out social care, but it's proved to be the kind of empty rhetoric that we expect from him time and again. And really just the burden has just been passed back to local authorities and to the council taxpayer. So really, I'm just endorsing the comments from councillor Kilgower and giving her another chance to join me in condemning the cuts over the last ten years to adult social care that have been so damaging and have been so highlighted during the pandemic over the last few months. Thank you.
Councillor Hoddart.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've got two things. The first one is about a government scheme, and I'm not sure if councillor Kilgower has been able to put her eyes on this, and it's called Inclusion Health Services Guidance. And it is about ensuring some of the people who are, let's say, less included and they are Roma and traveller communities who may not be registered with a doctor, may not have an NHS number, and what are local authorities doing to ensure that those people get included in the vaccination programme and the testing programme. And the other point is that at long last, it seems that we're going to get an upgrade of the last Mental Health Act. There have been a lot of recommendations made about this, and it seems that the role of the approved social workers, that's their old, the old term for them, but the social workers with approved under the Mental Health Act, that role will be enhanced and expanded. And I wondered if you'd had any thoughts yet or discussions about what's going to be the impact of this new extended role for approved social workers.
Councillor Chisholm. Councillor Chisholm.
Sorry, Lord, sorry, Lord Mayor, my question's already been asked. Thank you.
Councillor Ave.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Kilgower has already addressed my question, so just thanks, just thank her for the excellent report. Thank you.
Right, councillor Schofield. Councillor Schofield.
Yes, yes, thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Kilgower for your comprehensive report. And I'd also like to echo your thanks to all our adult social care staff. My question relates to refugees and asylum seekers. They're recognized to be among the hardest hit, most vulnerable to the pandemic. And I just wondered if you could tell us a little bit about how adult social care services are working in partnership with the specialist agencies across all sectors and with community groups to meet their special needs, care needs during this very difficult time. Thank you.
Councillor Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My question was in relation to, particularly in relation to health and in terms of GP services. I know that there has been understandably an awful lot of praise given to the GP consortium recently for its excellent work on the vaccination programme in Newcastle. But I'm also conscious that the pandemic is having an impact in terms of people's general access to GP services and that people are seemingly discouraged from seeking primary healthcare for various illness and conditions because they don't want to clog up the system in terms of, in terms of GP provision. I was wondering if you had any communication or dialogue with GPs on this and whether you have any particular thoughts to relay on that.
Councillor Kent.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Kilgower for the excellent report. Covered a huge amount and obviously recognizing the excellent work of our staff. In your introduction, I'll perhaps phrase this in a more constructive manner than councillor Cot, but you mentioned the vaccine rollout and it just seemed that there was some bit of confusion about vaccination of residents in care homes in the city. So I was just wondering if you'd care to comment on that. Thank you.
I haven't got anyone else indicated they want to contribute. So as I said earlier, I can't see that raise hands. So anyone quickly now? No? Right, councillor Kilgower, would you like to respond to that?
I'll certainly try, Lord Mayor. There's an awful lot there.
You've left you minute.
Councillor asked a couple of questions. Obviously, I'll answer one of his points along with the response to councillor Kemp. The growing complexity of needing the cost pressures, I think this might have been to do with some of the unexpected cost that we saw in our learning disability and, and or autism cohort of people. And there were, there were a number of factors at play there, part of it. There are a number of reasons why people have come into the system that we were unable to anticipate and therefore did not have a budget set aside for them. And some of that is to do with late, either children being diagnosed very late in childhood or people not being diagnosed until adulthood. But one of those ways is exactly what you suggested, councillor Cot, that people will have come to us and actually their learning disability hasn't become apparent because they've come to us through a different route. So they may have come to us through a safeguarding route and that may have been through sexual exploitation. But it may also have been around criminal exploitation, modern day slavery. So somebody will come into us through a certain route, we haven't been aware of them before. And during the support that we've given them through the safeguarding, it's become apparent that they've got a learning disability. And clearly then a package is needed, a wrapper, there's a crisis package needed to support that person in the immediate term. But then obviously there's also a long-term package once we've got a diagnosis diagnosis established to help that person live a a happy and productive and dignified life in the city. And I think we're working very hard with children's social care to work out, to try and find ways to establish those routes through transitions from children's social care into adult social care, so we can better anticipate need there. But I think with, with examples like that, it's really quite hard to anticipate. And clearly we have to react as people present to us or as we find people in the community through one one route or the other. Councillor Hoddart's question around the government scheme, I don't think that's a social care question. Just because somebody is from an ethnic minority doesn't mean that they have a social care need. I think it's it's more a question for our public health team, but I will most definitely get an answer to you, councillor Hoddart, and I'll make sure the rest of councillors copied into that also. The Mental Health Act, I think it's difficult to it's, it's difficult to say what we expect the enhanced role to be because we haven't had the guidance yet. Loving your cat, by the way. I think it's mindset behind it. So I think until we actually get the guidance from government, it would be remiss of us to try and preempt that because we could very easily be caught out by that. So I think as soon as the act becomes laws, as soon as we get the guidance from government, then we will seek to enhance the role, look to see what we need to do differently, look to see whether that's a recruitment issue or or a service reconfiguration issue or whatever. And I'm sure it'll be discussed at Health Scrutiny Committee. Councillor Stone, that's about GP services. I haven't had a direct dialogue with the CCG, no, councillor Stone. However, I'm very much aware that they're very involved in collaborative Newcastle. We've been working, our officers have been working very closely with them. I think it's important that we work together to to remind people, I think, I think it's important that we're all giving the same message, and I think we are. I think that's starting to roll out through our social media and other avenues, that we remind people that should they be in need of primary care, that they, that they absolutely should contact their GP, that they shouldn't postpone certain. There are some things that perhaps can be postponed. There are an awful lot of things that shouldn't be postponed. So if people is going, if people, if women need to go for a cancer screening test or all of those other services that you would expect people to go to their GP for, then they should certainly continue to do so. And I'm sure we can work further with them to, to enhance that message if we can. Councillor Avery asked about lessons learned by staff. He talked about redeployment of staff. Actually, that's something I should have probably mentioned in my introduction. One of the fabulous things that came out of this was that we have, we actually, apart from people being redeployed within adult social care, I think we had something like, I can't remember if it was twelve or twenty, members of staff from elsewhere in the council who volunteered to come and work in adult social care because they were unable to work from home in their substantive role. And I say a huge thank you to them. That was fabulous that they offered to do that. I think there are some general lessons to come out of that, that whole working from home, flexible working, new ways of working, the fact that we can do things remotely, that people don't necessarily need to be in a room to be part of a meeting. There are all of those general lessons. I think he's absolutely right. We have staff at all levels, I think from the director downwards, who all looked in at the very beginning of the crisis to make sure that PPE was distributed across the city to where it needed to go. And I think there's, I think there always was a very good team ethic in adult social care. I think that's certainly been enhanced through the pandemic. I think they are, from what I've seen, a very supportive staff group and have, and have all done whatever has needed to be done to make sure that services have been delivered. I think some of the other lessons we've learnt through the pandemic, we're using some of those lessons to renew and think during your hour, thinking around the integrated health and wellbeing hub, you know, is our vision still the same? How do we want to deliver our services? And I think we've there are, there are some really small scale things, you know, staff have learnt to be vigilant and never to become complacent. Really small things like removing those hidden touchpoints like magazines in waiting rooms and rest areas and maintaining the use of PPE even though the vaccines are being rolled out. You know, it's really important that our staff remember and that everybody else remembers that we're not through this yet. Just because a vaccine is starting to be rolled out doesn't mean that we can complacent. We need to maintain the whole hands face space and for our social care staff, obviously, the correct PPE. Councillor Schofield asked about refugees and asylum seekers and how we have supported them. It's a really really difficult question to ask, to answer, sorry, councillor Schofield. Clearly for people who have no recourse to public funds, it's very difficult to then provide council services. We have some excellent officers who do work with them. Our asylum seeker and migration lead now sits in adult social care and integrated services, and I think that's been very helpful. And so we've, we've supported where we can. I think some of the government's decisions have been absolutely appalling and contradictory, which has not helped. And we've, I've certainly, when I've attended the North East Migration Partnership meetings, I have made the city's view known to the Home Office and to their contractors, MERS. I have to say, actually, MERS have been I think they've been put in a very difficult position by the Home Office. And I also have to say that where we thought there might be a couple of instances of COVID of people being, having, displaying the symptoms of COVID, they acted immediately and appropriately. And luckily those, the two people concerned tested negative. So I think it's, I think it's very, very difficult. I think it's something we all have to keep an eye on. I think that the government are moving to basically make people destitute if they're starting to give people decisions again and people will have to move on from their accommodation and they've got nowhere to move on to. And all of those other issues, that's so completely contradictory and there's no, still no recourse to public phones. And it's completely contradictory to the policy of everyone in. So we're having to work through that myriad of contradictory policy from government, but we will continue to do so. And we will continue to do everything we can to people who have come to our city to seek sanctuary and to make this city their home. Councillor Higgins is absolutely right to highlight the government's woeful handling of the social care crisis, failing to deliver the solution the Prime Minister promised on, on the steps of Downing Street, relying instead on short-term inadequate one-off temporary funding streams and introducing the social care precept, which they fully expect councils to charge, a regressive tax which shunts the cost of those, to those who can least afford it. And yes, we should applaud our public sector frontline workers. But while that might be a photo opportunity for the Prime Minister, it does not solve the social care funding crisis and is frankly insulting when he and his Tory government then propose a freezing of public sector pay. I think we need to continue to pressure the government to come up with a sustainable, fair funding solution, but I won't hold my breath. Councillor Kemp also asked.
Just too many.
Sorry.
Just too many.
All right, okay, thank you. Councillor, that's the last question. Councillor Kemp, councillor Cot both asked about the vaccines in care homes. The COVID vaccination team had vaccinated over sixteen hundred residents across fifty care homes in the city, including both older people and specialist residential services. Some residents were unable to be vaccinated, however, and I think this is why the confusion has arisen. And it's been for a number of reasons. Either they had tested positive within the previous twenty eight days, they were in hospital at the time that the COVID team, vaccination team visited the care home, or they were displaying a fever or consent had not been received for the vaccination to be administered. And that might have been directly from the person involved, the resident, or where there wasn't capacity from their, their next of kin or named person. And I'm, I'm also aware of communications this year with one care home in the city, but I understand that has now been resolved. So I am confident that residents in our care homes have been vaccinated. Those who were missed were given follow-up opportunities and follow-up appointments. And if people were missed again because permissions weren't in place, then that has been followed up again. Lord Mayor, to sum up, I'm immensely proud of the services we provide and of our staff who continue to innovate while still carrying out their day jobs, of the passion shown and the willingness to go the extra mile. COVID may have distracted from the funding crisis while further contributing to it, but it has not gone away. If we are to avoid the national crisis and adult social care worsening even further, the government must act now and act fairly to ensure that all our residents who depend on our social care services can enjoy dignity and a quality of life that they deserve. I recommend the report to councillor, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you for that. Does councillor agree to receive the report?
Agree.
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 We can move on then to the second of the updates, which is on neighbourhoods and public health. I'll call on councillor Ali to introduce the report and once again wish her a happy birthday.
Thank you, councillor Cook. I've not had a chance to think about my birthday today, but thank you for, thank you for your best wishes. I was, sorry, just going to try and block that light out. I was delighted in being appointed to cabinet just over seven months ago. Seeing it's been a challenging period of time, however, is an understatement considering the work around COVID is in my portfolio. I have had insight into the fantastic work that is carried out by our staff and want on record my sincere thanks to them in all of the hard work and commitment they have shown in supporting us and our residents through these difficult times. As a cabinet member, I have been asked about my vision and political strategy in many areas of my portfolio, Lord Mayor. But to be really honest, the majority of the work that I've done so far is around best managing the COVID crisis together with the leader and staff in particular, our director of health, who has helped us understand the social science behind the virus. Trying to navigate through the government's approach in crisis management has been difficult and challenging. And we have seen time and time again the incompetence in which the Prime Minister and his cabinet have led us through the most turbulent times in modern history. Of course, I have vision and strategy and motivation. I want our neighbourhoods to be inclusive, sustainable, thriving with facilities that offer safe space, meet varying needs and provide a world-class service to all its users. I want our public health to be understandable and accessible, targets achievable. I don't want anyone's life expectancy reduced as a result of which ward they live in or what they eat. I want to eliminate poverty, discrimination and increase potential and opportunity. This will all prove to be challenging with further cuts imposed by government. But right at this moment in time, Lord Mayor, it's about saving lives. it's about saving lives and delivering services. It's all hands on deck to make sure we can get through this pandemic and remain alive and healthy once this nightmare is over. This report gives an insight into the work that has been carried out in responding to the COVID crisis and towards recovery, in particular with our Black, Asian and minority ethnic communities, furthering our party values and commitment to equality and ensuring that no one is left out, regardless of the barriers they may face. Having experienced COVID myself with my husband and children and still recovering from its deadly effects, I know only too well how much I myself value health and the services we are providing, not to mention our fantastic NHS. We, as a family, relied so much on the help and care, Lord Mayor, to get us through what became the most frightening and worrying experience of our lives. My husband's health deteriorated right in front of me very, very fast, and he ended up in hospital. The road to recovery appears much longer for him, even though he is one of the healthiest people I know. I have committed myself in working together with our residents, our members and our staff in evaluating the impact of this pandemic and shaping our neighbourhoods and our health services for the betterment of this city. I present to you my report, Lord Mayor. I want to take this opportunity in thanking staff and colleagues with its preparation and the scrutiny committee for their scrutiny. I will try my best to answer any questions tonight, Lord Mayor. However, if I can't, I will get back to members by email. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ali. Again, I'll ask a number of members if they'll keep their contributions concise. Start with councillor Higgins.
Yes, am I, am I, yes, I think I'm unmuted. Yes, thanks very much, Lord Mayor. And thanks to councillor Ali for her report. As she indicated there, she is still fairly new to the role, so I think I want to thank her for the comprehensive report and also the way that she's risen to the challenges of the last few months at such a very difficult time. The report does contain a lot of very positive things. And one of the things that stands out to me is our continued support for libraries. I'm a lover of libraries as a very, very important community resource. And I know that councillor Ali is keen to promote these in the future. So perhaps just some thoughts about how we'll go about that. And I also note the effective partnership with the voluntary sector and many community groups, community volunteers, that's been harnessed through the outstanding success of City Lifeline and was vital to so many people, particularly the most vulnerable. So I just wondered if councillor Ali also has any thoughts about how we can continue to build on those positive relationships as we face the pandemic in the months ahead. Thanks very much, Lord Mayor.
councillor Avi.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The need for open space has never been greater than during the pandemic. And I'm sure urban green are doing their best to operate our parks in Newcastle. Castle Ward in the north of the city has been, has seen thousands of new homes built at the Great Park and in northern villages of Dillington, Hazelwick and Brunswick. We are all very concerned about the loss of more green space to points that my ward will only be left with Havana and Big Water nature reserves. We want people to feel safe when visiting parks and green spaces in Newcastle. Does the council have any plans to dissociate such spaces from antisocial behaviour? Do you feel confident that urban green have the necessary tools to make our green spaces safer and more welcoming for all residents of the city to enjoy? And how will urban green manage the infrastructure, such as flood prevention measures and footpath maintenance in our green spaces? Thank you.
councillor Byrne. councillor Byrne. We'll come back to you. councillor Cot.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And first of all councillor Ali, please accept my, my good wishes to you and your family in this situation, so I'm sharing a screen, in the situation that you faced yourselves over this crisis. And I would want to put on records my, my good wishes to you. Couple of questions. You mentioned vision, which I'm pleased to see that you have for your portfolio. Could you perhaps outline what your vision might be for working with the voluntary sector? Because there are certain developments, changes, you mentioned some of them in your report, around community hubs. Be interested to know how you're engaging with the voluntary sector in relation to those issues. And also in the relation to community buildings and asset transfers. I've certainly got a couple of examples in my ward where there is a bit of anxiety about how the council's working with community organisations to achieve an outcome with a long lease. And I'd be interested in what the strategy is there. Because a few years ago, we were told that those facilities would basically close if a lease wasn't agreed, but things carry on. I'm interested in that. councillor, the other issue was about play areas. Part of that's been raised about urban green and their involvement. But I'm just wondering whether you could say anything about the maintenance of facilities that are outside urban green. It's really difficult sometimes to get basic maintenance, even things like, you know, painting, checking that.
I'm taking this off camera. Are you off form, are you?
Okay, I'll leave it there. The house is trying to.
No.
Can people mute themselves, please? councillor Cot, carry on.
So I was just saying, this is my final question, was just about maintenance of green, sorry, of play areas that aren't part of the urban green setup and budget provision there. We do have some problems getting basic repairs, maintenance, things like painting, making sure that the facilities are safe. And the worry is, of course, that these play areas will deteriorate. And then in the future, there will be greater repairs that will be needed. So I'd be interested in any views that she has on about that.
councillor Mendelson.
Yes, thank you. Thanks very much councillor Ali for the report and the whole public health team for their work, the excellent work they're doing, they have been doing and continue to do to support us during this pandemic crisis. My question is particularly around the role of the community health champions. Well, you note in the, particularly in the bit on the Black and BAME communities, that you're developing the role of community health champions. And I suppose my question is, how do you think it can help improve health outcomes in the BAME communities beyond COVID? A little bit more about the role and whether this role could be beneficial in other settings, younger people, sheltered accommodation in terms of promoting wellbeing and health? Thank you.
councillor Hoad.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for the report, councillor Ali. And I'm sorry to hear about the difficulties you and your family have been having. I hope your husband has a speedy recovery. I echo the thoughts on the work of the public health team. They've done a remarkable job, given the circumstances. And I appreciate what you say about the difficulties of trying to look longer term when things are so sort of immediately pressing. But that being said, on the vision moving forward, we've had quite a few places around the council in scrutiny meetings and previous city council reports where the 15-minute neighbourhoods concept has been introduced in Paris, has been mentioned. I'm still not 100% sure whether this is a policy within the council and if so, whether we are actually taking it as described by that policy, which involves much more than some transport changes here and there, that sort of thing. It's an entire piece of work, including changes to planning and all sorts of other interconnected things to create these neighbourhood units. So I'm just wondering what the position is of the council on that and whether we could get some more clarity on that. Thank you very much.
councillor Kemp. Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I actually will be brief. Congratulations on your report, councillor Ali. Excellent first year and very trying circumstances. Could you just expand, please, on your vision for parks and open spaces? Thank you. councillor Ashby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to ask about the policy in respect to the operation of the permit system. This allows statutory undertakers to close and dig up roads. In my ward, just before Christmas, City Fibre started laying new high-speed broadband cables, and they tidied up themselves and after themselves and moved on, excellent. Then Openreach started poking around in its ducts. And in the last few weeks, Virgin Media has been digging up exactly the same roads and pavements, even cutting through previously laid cables. Ridiculous and wasteful are two of the polite epithets that residents use. Why isn't the city coordinating its applications to reduce the huge nuisance to residents of multiple digging up and questionable restitution? And I do appreciate that you may not be able to answer that off the cuff, and you may want to write to me separately about that, and that will be absolutely fine. Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Schofield.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you councillor Ali for that very comprehensive report. And thanks too to you and the public health team for all you're doing to keep us all safe and secure during this very difficult time. And I've heard you say very eloquently in many forums, and the figures show that people in BME communities are particularly vulnerable to the virus. And I do know from people in my ward that many of them are very frightened and find it difficult to understand what the implications are, and especially when English is not their first language. So I just wondered if you could say a little bit about what your communication strategy has been and is to ensure that people within these communities understand the importance of the vaccine and how assessing it, how to access it as it's rolled out across the city? Thank you.
And do we have councillor Byrne with us? The last one. councillor Byrne? No, we don't seem to have her.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I do, apologies. I'm having some trouble with my mute button. But I really wanted to ask councillor Ali if she could tell us how our portfolio has contributed to our city's commitments in terms of net zero emissions and biodiversity? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for all those. councillor Ali, you've got about 10 minutes to respond as far as you can in this forum.
Yes, I'll try my best, Lord Mayor. Lots of questions, which is good. And starting off with councillor Higgins. So you asked, how am I promoting libraries as a vital community resource? And how do we build on such relationships as we face the pandemic and its aftermath? Currently, we're taking advice from public health. Staff and public safety is absolutely paramount. So we're having to limit access and deliver what is appropriate and safe and what is the right thing to do. I want to engage more widely and review our approach, very much in line with the Libraries Connected Charity, which has five key areas. And the first one is about tackling loneliness and isolation. The second is digital inclusion. The third being education. The fourth, employment. And the fifth, a cultural offer. To enable all of that, I want members' involvement and staff input as well as public consultation. And very importantly, buying from our stakeholders. I want to see an inclusive, sustainable and high-quality public library at the heart of our communities. And that's the, that's the vision. At the moment, as you'll appreciate, you know, we're in lockdown. And when we were in the tier system, some libraries had to remain closed. But having said all of that, the City Library has been able to continue delivering some really important services, one of which is the visa service, which allows migrants, immigrants or asylum seekers to register their biometrics there. And that has continued and is continuing actually even now. So we've had to put some of the stuff on hold, considering we're in a lockdown. But that's very much where I'm heading. councillor Avi, open space, urban green. Okay, what you're saying in terms of, you know, there's lots of houses and there's less green space and I kind of, it's a balance, isn't it? Because if you haven't got a place to live, then the park is not going to be any use to you, is it? But having said that, I mean, my experience working with urban green as vice chair, I've just recently been appointed, so you'll appreciate the relationship is very new, is that they have a really strong commitment in making sure that as many of our residents as possible have access to open space in whichever form that takes place. And no two parks will be the same in terms of its size and its service. But the area that you're talking about, perhaps I need to find out a bit more about what the future plans are on those estates. So I can certainly come back to you with some more information. And you asked about flood prevention and footpath measures in those green spaces. Again, I will have to come back to you just to find out a little bit more about what urban green's policy currently is. nick Cot, thank you very much for your kind words. The vision outlining working with the VCS and community hubs. I mean, it's, you know, we've done a review of our contracts with the voluntary sector. And it really is time that we took stock of where we're at and to see how we want to move forward. The commitment is still there to work with our voluntary sector. And for me, having worked in the voluntary sector for many, many years, I can't stress enough how important the third sector is to the council and more so for our residents. And so we will find ways of continuing that work. But you'll appreciate that it will look different. And having them, you know, well, working with them to engage with our residents is absolutely crucial. And so it will be, it will probably be a different way of working, but through the VCS. Community buildings and asset transfers. The building that you're talking about in particular, so perhaps the best thing to do is to have a conversation offline about those particular buildings. I mean, for me, I want to see all of our buildings used, you know, they're there for the community, and I want to see that. But I guess the responsibility is to make sure that if there's any asset transfer that take place, they go through the due diligence. We make sure that people who are committing are able to do that and obviously offer our services and expertise where possible. So perhaps we can take that conversation offline. And I'll certainly get in touch with you regarding that. Play areas maintenance. So I, my understanding is that urban green were in the process of tendering for a new contractor for repairs. And I believe they've just recently, very recently taken on a new contractor. So I know that a lot of maintenance was on hold, especially in play areas. And if you're talking about our council-owned play areas, then those, yes, they are. Then some of those have had, we've had to put them on hold because of decisions that we've taken with the budget. But as and when money becomes available, then those will continue. They were branded in terms of how deteriorated they were or whether there was a safety issue. And my understanding again, and I may have to check this again with staff, is that those that weren't able to use, they had to then, you know, be taken off for use for children and people. So again, budget restrictions or budget decisions have resulted in some of that, unfortunately. But the vision really is to make sure that all of our play areas are up to a good standard and they are accessible by children and adults. I think that's all of your questions. Forgive me if I've missed any. councillor Mendelson, you asked about BAME champions. This is just such an exciting piece of work that we've undertaken. And we were well ahead of the game. So we started recruiting community champions or certainly visited the concept back in August, I believe. And that was the work done through the BAME Steering Committee. You asked how the role improves health outcomes in BAME communities and will it be beneficial in other settings? It will help, obviously, because we will be able to communicate more effectively in different languages. And that's always been an absolute priority for me, coming from a BAME background, in making sure that people can understand what it is that the council is wanting to do. in making sure that people can understand what it is that the council is wanting to do. And now, with being able to recruit champions from within the community, we're actually going to be able to do that, especially during these times. It's really important people understand how to deal with Covid, what to do if they contract it, and how to get better. But obviously, how to avoid it as well, which is equally as important. We've got now over 40 champions, and we're still recruiting, and we're setting up a dedicated webpage. I've been heavily involved with comms and getting key messages out in a variety of languages. And I know that my colleagues in council, both councillor Arman and the other councillor Arman, we've come together and put some key messages out in our own languages. And I know that those messages have been a huge success. And the work that was done with our Eastern European communities has gone as far as countries in Eastern Europe, including France and Germany. So that was really successful. Currently, the focus is Covid, and in particular, take-up of the vaccine, as well as adhering to Covid-related rules. However, I really do see this, the concept evolving, and recruiting more champions to work in other areas of the council. So not just health, but obviously looking at the wider determinants, but other areas as well. So that's something that I will keep on the back burner for now, but certainly part of my overall vision. And not to mention mental health, there definitely will be scope to do some work with our community champions in mental health, and certainly understanding some of the issues that will come from our BAME communities. Councillor Hall, you asked about the 15-minute neighbourhoods. Again, you have asked me this question in scrutiny, and I did say that I will get back to you because I wasn't sure. And the reason I wasn't sure is that it doesn't sit in my portfolio area. I know there is some overlap, but it predominantly sits with councillor Ainsley. And I have spoken to councillor Ainsley, and she's assured me that she's had many conversations with, I'm not sure if it's you in particular, but people from your party, from the opposition, and about what 15 neighbourhoods is about, minute neighbourhoods is about, and the work that's being done. So again, can I invite a conversation between yourself and councillor Ainsley, and perhaps she can respond in writing?
Councillor Ali, a couple left.
Oh, sorry. Councillor Kemp, yes, vision for parks. I've talked a little bit about urban green, but very much to work in partnership with urban green. They want to work with the community, they want to hit their targets. And I'm very much about working with the community and making sure that whatever we offer through our parks and open spaces meets needs of individuals and the community as a whole. Councillor Ashby, roads and pavements, not in my portfolio area, so I will pass that on. And Schofield, you asked about BAME communities' language barriers. I mean, you know, I just can't stress enough what the experience of Covid has been like for myself and my family. And it just made me realise some of the gaps in the communication and understanding what Covid is all about. So I will be doing a lot more work with our champions and relaying some of that experience to make sure that the quality of our work is at the highest. Finishing off with councillor Byrne, what aspects of the portfolio, net zero biodiversity? We've worked with the Public Sector Decarbonisation Scheme to include energy reduction and carbon reduction measures in our buildings. If we're successful with that bid, then we'll be able to retrofit carbon and energy reduction measures, which will help towards our objectives of net zero by 2030. The bid is in the region of £27 million, and I'm really hopeful that we will get that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ali, well done. Does council agree to receive the report?
Agreed.
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 Colleagues, item 11 is appointments. Are the appointments agreed as set out under supplemental agenda?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. So if we can move on to the notices of motion, there are three of them. The first one is on carers. I'll call on councillor Huddart to move this motion to be seconded by councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I hope you can hear me. Yes. I felt it important to raise the issue of carers. Other people have already mentioned carers this evening, but it's really because being a carer affects so many people in this city and across the country. Also, because I've worked with carers. But I'm not on this occasion referring to the hundreds of individuals who work as paid carers in either the voluntary, statutory or charitable sectors, looking after our elderly and disabled. And everyone has already given credit to the important work that these folks have done during the recent pandemic for our vulnerable residents. I am in this motion referring to the thousands of men and women who undertake caring duties across this city as volunteers and not as paid employees. We don't actually know how many people could be classed as carers because it's a role many of us undertake without knowing that we're doing it. You know, how many of us have helped an unmobile or forgetful relative to do their shopping, to take them for hospital appointments, help them dress or help them do their hair? And we do it because we care. The recent pandemic has thrown light on the numbers of people in our communities who need an extra bit, or in some cases, a lot of help to keep them going. And having a friend or a neighbour or someone we care about who suddenly become ill has thrust a lot of people into the role of a voluntary carer. And it's a role for which many people are invariably unprepared and untrained. And it's a role which has meant for some people totally rethinking their lifestyle. Some people have to give up their jobs, move home or become financially disadvantaged. And many people do, they step up to the plate, they've gone the extra mile, you know, donated to charities and all the rest of it during the pandemic, and they all deserve our praise. However, for some residents, caring has become a full-time job, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we know that care duties involve watching and changing and feeding and cleaning and shopping and giving people medicines and lifting and moving and putting wheelchairs and things. And that many care duties are repetitive, they're often thankless, and they take a toll on the physical and mental health of carers. Caring comes at a cost to the carer, and many struggle on for years. And when I worked for carers, we found that on average, people cared for seven years before they actually broke down and asked for help from either their doctor or a nurse or a social worker. Carers are also entitled to an assessment in their own right. Many people are unaware of this, or that they might be entitled to respite care until they ask for help from a charity or social services. And many people are unaware they might be entitled to some financial or legal help. And there's a lot of charities, and there's some of them in this city, who operate full-time telephone helplines and websites to give advice on the entitlements and financial benefits. And it's reckoned, Lord Mayor, that carers save both the NHS and social services £132 billion every year. In the UK, there are at least 1 million people who claim carers allowance, but there are an estimated seven times that number who are also performing caring duties 24 hours a day, seven days a week, without financial reward. And to receive the carer's allowance, which is a wonderful £67.25 per week, you must be caring for someone 35 hours a week. And that works out at £1.92 an hour. But if you're also in paid work and earn more than £128 a week, you're not entitled to a carer's allowance. So it affects part-time workers and pensioners alike. Unfortunately, sorry.
Perhaps you should wind up, please.
Right, I have made the case out in the motion, Lord Mayor. And I would say we've waited for several years for either a green paper or a white paper on the reform of funding of social care. And in the meanwhile, carers struggle on. And it's important, Lord Mayor, that this campaign for extra funding is supported by our local MPs and communicated to the Secretary of State. And I look forward to the support for this motion from everyone in this council. Thank you.
Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm delighted we have the time this month to discuss the vital role of unpaid carers in looking after our frail and vulnerable residents. Carers face big challenges every single day, and the challenges have been made far harder by coronavirus. Throughout the Covid-19 pandemic, the majority of carers have had to provide more care, and the pandemic has had a devastating effect on the lives of both carers and those they are caring for. A majority have had to provide extraordinary hours of care for loved ones with increasing needs during the crisis, often without the usual help from family and friends, and with sometimes limited or no support from local services. And as a result, many people providing care have been left exhausted, socially isolated and close to burnout. Adding to these considerable pressures, carers have also taken a financial hit and seen their health and wellbeing decline. They're worried about their own mental health, worried about what will happen if they themselves fall ill because there's no one to take over, and worried about how they can cope with the current lockdown. Many have faced a dreadful choice between trying to look after highly dependent relatives at home with all the financial, physical and emotional stress that can cause, or allowing relatives to be admitted for care, knowing that due to restricted visiting, they may never see them again. It's a heartbreaking choice, and one I'm so relieved I didn't have to make when my mother needed care. We must do far more to support our wonderful carers, and they urgently need more support to help them through the winter. In the short term, Carers UK are calling on the government to continue to introduce measures that support carers, including making sure that carers can take a break. Sorry, just lost my place. Can take a break and that returns of essential services is prioritised. Providing clear guidance, information and advice specifically for carers. Most importantly, raising the level of the carers allowance, which is, as Dorian has said, appallingly low. Supporting carers to look after their own health and wellbeing, and provided targeting funding for carers' mental health support. Ensuring that carers are better able to juggle work and care and remain in work. And providing sufficient funding for social care over the winter. However, it's not just short-term measures that are needed. In addition to increasing the carers' allowance, the government needs to put carers at the heart of a reformed and sustainable social care system that provides more support both to those giving and receiving care. Let's show carers just how much they are valued by giving them both the financial and practical support they need and proper recognition of their vital role. I do hope everyone will support this motion.
Thank you. Now I'll call on councillor Kilgour to move an amendment. I understand this to be seconded by councillor Holland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Huddart, for bringing the original motion. And you too. I hope you'll accept this amendment as a friendly one, as it's intended to be. We know that in 2019 to 20, as I've already said tonight, Newcastle Council supported 2,095 carers, making 315 routine referrals to Newcastle carers, and a further 197 referrals to the British Red Cross. But we know that this is just the tip of the iceberg. It's estimated, I think councillor Huddart's already mentioned this, that there are at least six and a half million carers in the UK, with 3 million of them balancing work with caring responsibilities. Caring responsibilities which in many cases intensified during the pandemic and subsequent lockdowns, with some carers looking after their loved ones full-time, while also trying to manage a deterioration in the condition of the person they care for, particularly for those caring for someone living with dementia and ill mental health. During the pandemic, the council, our commissioned services and partners in the third sector have continued to support carers by delivering information, advice and support, including access to the Carers Wellbeing Fund and Carers Covid-19 Fund for carers of all ages across the city. Funding was secured to employ a dedicated carers information advice worker to work directly in our hospitals and other specialist services, delivered by Newcastle Carers and the British Red Cross. I'm sorry, and the British Red Cross have continued to be delivered, often in different Covid-19 secure ways, despite an increase in referrals. We reopened our in-house facilities such as the Wellford Centre, Biker Lodge and Castle Dean, again in a Covid-19 secure way, meaning fewer people could access the service at any one time. Caring for someone is often a positive and fulfilling experience, but we must recognise that carers may need some additional support to help them continue in their crucial role. Many have, as the substantive motion and amendment point out, had to reduce their paid working hours or give up work completely in order to continue in their caring role. Given that the unpaid carers are estimated to save the UK around £132 billion a year in health and care costs, it is not, I believe, an unreasonable ask of government to increase carers' allowance by a minimum of £20 a week, and in doing so, ease the impact of caring just a little bit. I move the amendment, Lord Mayor.
councillor Holland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As somebody who cares for my elderly cousin, I have no hesitation in supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Morrissey.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm going to turn our attention to a different type of carer that hasn't been mentioned tonight, the young carer. Young carers are those classified as being under the age of 18, and there's no funding allowance for them at all. And this is an anomaly which should be addressed. If a 14 or 16-year-old carer is providing the same care as an 18-year-old, why are they not receiving financial remuneration? Surely this is an anomaly to be included in the reform of the health and social care provision we've been promised. Young carers on a daily basis are helping to look after a relative with a disability, a mental illness, drug or alcohol addiction or a disability. Young carers often look after a parent, but in many situations, that also means caring for siblings, both younger and older than themselves. They often do the chores such as shopping, preparing meals, cooking, cleaning, washing, et cetera. However, there are young ones, young carers, who have to help someone get dressed and undressed, support a parent with mobility issues to move around, and also take their medication. And on occasions, they may also have to help with personal and intimate care. Along with doing these physical things, they are very often offering emotional support to parents and siblings. Many young carers start giving care at a very young age and don't even realise that they're carers, it's just part of what's normal in their family. Other young people become carers overnight and are thrown into a world where they shouldn't be doing the same things that adult carers have to do. Young carers should not be spending a lot of their time caring for someone if this could get in the way of schoolwork and doing the same kinds of things that other children or young people do. Often, young carers have more social time at all to themselves. And during the pandemic, further pressure will be put on these young carers as they will not have been attending school, which does or did provide some respite from their caring duties. So why do the young carers do this? Often because they're fiercely proud and protective of their family, they don't want to be regarded as different, and often see the work they do as part of family life. Also, there's a concern about what might happen if they tell. Families are very guarded in discussing what they see as family business with outsiders who may make them feel out of control. And there is still suspicion of what the council will do, if families are seen not to be coping. All of us here know what is available to such families, but the young carers don't. Huge strides have been made over the years in supporting young carers and making it easier for them to come forward and get help. Every school I've worked in had young carers, many of whom only came to our notice as a result of an emergency situation. Many young carers are still hidden in plain sight. So it was very pleasing to hear councillor Kilgour earlier on this evening include young carers in the work being carried out by Newcastle. It is the responsibility of all adults to speak up if we think a young person is acting in the role of an adult and caring for a family member. It's also our responsibility to ensure they are not discriminated against because of their age. I agree with councillor Huddart that this campaign for extra funding is supported by our local MPs and is communicated to the Secretary of State. And I also look forward to the support of this motion by the whole of this chamber. Thank you.
councillor Dunn.
Right, thank you, thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And I want to express my support for this excellent amendment by councillor Kilgour.
And I want to express my support for this excellent amendment by councillor Kilgower. It's obviously particularly appropriate at this time. And I suppose, like many people, I've rethought my own personal view of who counts as a carer during this particular pandemic. You know, we think of carers as carrying out a specific duty. And, okay, it is a very distinct group. But I think, you know, there are a lot of people at the moment who I would personally class as carers. People like domiciliary workers, people like supermarket staff, drivers, fundraisers, frontline workers, people just doing their ordinary jobs. And that includes all council workers who have taken on that extra responsibility of checking on people during this current period of time. And really, the impact on our communities of what we're going through just beggars belief. It's absolutely disastrous. And it's particularly so for that distinct category of people who we would define as voluntary carers. You know, everyone is loved by somebody. And the effects of the situation we're in cannot really be described. And in my view, the actions proposed in councillor Kilgower's amendment will help the situation. And I do hope councillor Hoddart sees it in that way and is able to accept the amendment. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor
Avery? Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry, I thought you were saying councillor Ainsley. I have great pleasure to speak in support of the amendment of the motion, which is timely and very important. When I was in primary school, my mother, it would have been a winter that was quite similar to the one we're in now, slipped on black ice and broke her arm. While she was in hospital being assessed for that, a broken arm, we discovered that what had previously been thought to be relapsing, remitting multiple sclerosis was in fact secondary progressive multiple sclerosis. Her condition rapidly worsened when I was a child. And by the time I was a teenager, I was a child carer. It changes the life of people who are in that situation. They have to take on responsibilities ahead of their time. And it changes their lives and their outlook on life. And while it was something I did willingly and would do again, it is a responsibility and a burden and a difficulty that only some people have to deal with. And it's tremendously important that we recognise the importance of child carers, of other carers, unpaid and paid, informal and formal, who make a tremendous contribution to our city. And we have to remind ourselves over and over again that without their labour, we would simply not be able to carry on, that they provide an absolutely essential and crucial service. And what they're doing is an act of love, a tremendous love and compassion that is really what we as a city should celebrate. And I would like to go further and just to say that that we really need to think about them in every part of our decision-making, which I'm confident as a council we do, but I think too often in other areas of government, they're forgotten and taken for granted. And their roles and their importance are diminished or misunderstood. And I would like to subscribe entirely to everything that's been said about the terrible burden that COVID has placed on people. I think too frequently, the needs of carers, their emotional needs have been forgotten about, and it's just been assumed that they can just keep on going no matter how long lockdown goes on. And their needs for things like socialisation, for breaks, for rest, for relaxation have been forgotten because they're not monetary needs. And the needs of businesses have been placed above them. And I think that's been intensely regrettable. So I'm really glad that this isn't a partisan issue. I think this is something that we can come together as one council on to reaffirm the incredible importance of carers, child carers, of formal carers, of informal carers, of kinship carers, all the different kinds of people who provide care in our city, and to say how crucial we are to Newcastle, how proud we are of them, and that we're willing to take these actions as undertaken in this motion and in the amendment to support them. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor has proposed that standing orders be suspended to extend the guillotine. Is that agreed?
No.
I think we're going to have, can we take a quick go vote on this, please? I presume it's seconded by somebody.
Yes, councillor Ashby.
Thank you. Has everyone voted?
No, Lord Mayor. I vote suspend. My system is screwed up and I can't get in, I'm sorry. But yes, I vote for the motion to suspend.
I also vote for the motion to suspend councillor Paul.
We've got so far 36 votes not to suspend the motion, so 37. So it's agreed that the motion, that standing orders will not be suspended. So if I can move on to request if councillor Shatwell would like to contribute.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Of the estimated 13.6 million unpaid carers in the UK today, a staggering 4.5 million only started providing unpaid care during the pandemic, which is 1 in 10 people. I'm one of those people unexpectedly and suddenly becoming an unpaid carer during COVID. The pandemic has cruelly exaggerated the contradictions inherent in caregiving. While society isolates and distances, the unpaid carer retains human intimacy. I don't leave the house and have reduced support networks and relationships, but I am able to hold my mum's hand. Unpaid carers are now more isolated, exhausted and stressed as the pandemic has increased the needs of those receiving care due to changes in services or as an increase in symptoms. As Alzheimer's Society research shows, unpaid carers have noticed increased cognitive and emotional symptoms plus loss of mobility among those they care for. And whilst I'll never know for sure if my mum's loss of mobility last April was due to the effects of self-isolation, it's deeply saddening that this independence is now permanently lost. COVID has also shifted the profile of unpaid carers, with new carers like myself more likely to be younger, female and working. The total of all workers now juggling work and unpaid care to 26%, 1 in 4 workers. This pressure has led to many carers having to reduce their paid working hours, leave work or stop studying, putting further strain on their future job prospects, especially since the government's response to COVID has decimated many sectors. But these long-term worries around employment and financial security are outweighed by the immediate anxiety of providing care safely. Whilst some families have stopped receiving care workers into their homes, those with advanced dementia like my mum have no choice but to continue welcoming care workers multiple times a day. These care workers have become our new self-isolating community, and I fear for their safety as much as I fear for passing the virus on to us. Despite PPE, social distancing and the successful vaccination of care workers, the fear of transmission remains, given the devastating consequences of it for my mum. This idea of dying alone from a global pandemic that she doesn't know exists. And we should acknowledge it's thanks to the campaigning bodies, not the government. It's thanks to campaigning bodies such as Carers UK that unpaid carers are now on Group Six of the Joint Committee Vaccine List. So the pandemic has exposed that placing care at the centre of everything we do involves recognising our interdependencies. Care cannot be properly carried out unless both caregivers and care receivers, indeed every one of us, are supported. This can only happen if care is cultivated, shared and resourced on an egalitarian basis so that the whole of society shares care's multiple joys and burdens. Care needs to be at the heart of our lives and of our politics. It must be valued and shared at every scale of life, from the domestic to the state, and never tolerated as an exploited form of labour shouldered mainly by women and the poor. A broader, more universal approach to care involves reinvigorating welfare states, creating alternatives to capitalist markets and an expansion of kinship into larger caring communities strengthened by cooperative and public ownership. So as part of our COVID economic recovery plans, we could aim to embrace the caring economy and position ourselves firmly as a caring council. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, colleagues, the guillotine has now fallen. So I would have called on one further speaker, but in fact, no one has indicated they want to speak and no one, as far as I recollect, has reserved the right to speak. So I will call on councillor Hoddart to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to everyone who's made contributions this evening and brought us insights, different insights, because we all know somebody who cares. Most of us have experienced caring, or our friends or neighbours or carers. So thank you all for your contributions. And councillor Shatwell, you are correct, the majority of carers are women. It affects their work, they work part-time. Caring is considered women's work, which, you know, I think we need a change of attitude there. However, I am perfectly happy because we all know that this is an issue and we all think they need a little bit more money. We've seen the effect of another £20 a week for the folks on Universal Credit. Another £20 a week for carers would relieve a lot of the financial stress they're under. So I'm perfectly happy to accept the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hoddart. So councillor Hoddart has accepted the amendment. So is the amended motion agreed? Okay, I think that's clear then that that's agreed, Lord Mayor. Thank you. Agreed then that that's passed. So we need now to deal with remaining items on the agenda for the two motions. First one being staying bee-friendly. Can I ask councillor Hoddart if you would like this motion to be dealt with this evening without debate?
Mayor, if, sorry, I'm happy to deal with it now, Lord Mayor. If I can just say a few words.
Well, no, actually, you can't.
I wanted to say a few words to accept the amendment.
Aye, that's fine.
Is it? Yes. Right, just to say that while preparing this, when I first introduced a motion about protecting bees was in January 2010. Someone looked it up for me. So it is an issue I've been plugging for some time. And I wanted to say that when I submitted this, there was this worry that the government was going to introduce neonicotinoids again. And they have in the intervening time. But it's not been in the form of spray. It's been in the form of treatment for the seeds for sugar beet, and it's been restricted to 120 days in the year. And only certain people can do it. So they have taken note of all the objections and concerns of the environmentalists. So I just wanted to say again, thank you for your interest and your desire to amend it. And I would say to councillor Stevenson, I'm not sure why he wants us to support the co-op's Save the Bees campaign because I have already asked them this and on several occasions, and they've said they will only help Manchester because that's where their head office is. And we know that the city doesn't allow pesticides. I was instrumental in stopping that. But this was about farms within the city limit. But if we can accept the amendment, then we can move on. Thank you.
councillor Ashby, can I ask you to formally second the motion?
Yes, yes, Lord Mayor, formally second the motion. I think I muted myself there.
Well, councillor Hoddart has accepted the amendment. So I don't think we need to go through those formalities. So is amended the motion as amended agreed?
Agreed.
Carried and the final one is on the responsible fireworks. Can I ask councillor Kane if he wants it to be dealt with this evening or deferred?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to deal with it this evening. So if I could propose the motion and note that I accept the amendment.
Right. councillor Woodock, can I ask you to formally second the motion?
Formally second the motion, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And again, we note that councillor Kane has accepted the amendment. So can I simply ask if the motion as amended?
Sorry, Lord Mayor, does it not still have to be proposed and seconded?
Okay, well.
I think probably legally.
Would you like to move the amendment?
I, Lord Mayor, yeah, absolutely, I'd move the amendment.
And councillor Bell, would you like to second that?
Second the amendment, Lord Mayor.
Right, well, councillor Kane indicated he did accept the amendment. So is the motion as amended agreed? Thank you, colleagues. I just want to apologise this evening. I've had a few problems with noticing, or not noticing rather, that hands were raised. For some reason, my system has not been indicating that this evening. So if I've missed anybody, my apologies. Just finally to indicate that the next virtual meeting will be at 6pm on Wednesday, the 3rd of March. So thank you, colleagues. Thank you, everyone who's been watching in online and good evening.
Good night.